Twenty first meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome everyone. It's good to see a good turnout tonight. We've got a pretty full agenda, so we'll get right to it. At this time, I want to ask Commissioner Johnson to lead the pledge of allegiance and have the invocation.
Stand, please, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing and pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight as a county body and as individuals. We ask for your blessings for our nation. We have problems across our nation. We ask for blessings for our military and our law enforcement and our healthcare workers as they go through their daily routines. We have world problems, Father. We ask for your blessings for all the way across this world, especially in Ukraine and for the underprivileged and poor people of that nation that are just being homeless and starving to death. Father, the damage to our infrastructure in this country is causing problems for our underprivileged here at home. We ask for your blessings for all these things. We just ask for your blessings for each individual here in this room that everybody has a situation they need help with. We ask that the county officials make the right decisions for the people in Harnett County tonight. Ask these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Gasson. All right, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the published agenda? I'll entertain a motion to accept the published agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the agenda, the published agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. That was a FIBO decision. All right, a consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? If not, I'll approve, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hear it unanimously, Madam Clerk. All right, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. We will have a period of thirty minutes. I would request that everyone turn off any electronic devices, please, or silence them. And if you want to speak, you'll have three minutes. I ask you to be professional in your comments and no profane language and that type of thing will be allowed. Anyone wishing to address the board tonight? When you come up, please state your name and your address. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public comment period. And we will move to item six on the agenda, which is a proposed zoning change out on, in the barbecue township on Buffalo Lake Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm aware tonight that we're looking to possibly table this, but since we've advertised for this afternoon or for tonight's meeting, I'm gonna go ahead and go through the, go through the application as well as we can open the public hearing and then table it at that point too after, after discussion. The request tonight is a rezoning request from commercial to RA twenty R. The owner of record is Marie West Blackman, who is also the applicant in this case. The property is on Buffalo Lake Road and is approximately 1.11 acres. It's located in the barbecue township. And the site is currently occupied by a landscaping business consisting of several structures. The site was rezoned to commercial in January 2018 in hopes of selling the business in parcel. Surrounding land uses are single-family residential and various commercial uses. Public water is available and public sewer is also available to the site. Staff has evaluated the site and found the following, that the impact to the surrounding community is reasonable as the requested zoning district is compatible with surrounding parcels. The requested zoning to RA twenty R is compatible with overall land use classification of the compact mixed-use area as well as within the compatibility target area. The compact mixed-use classification is in areas that are known for growing activity centers based on potential utility act availability, access to major thoroughfares, and higher-density developments. The requested zoning to RA twenty R would enhance and maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare due to the residential setting that it's located in. And since the parcel is adjacent to residential zoning, the applicant does not need to be evaluated or the application does not need to be evaluated for small-scale rezoning. Having said that, the suggested statement of consistency shall read, as stated in the evaluation, the requested rezoning to RA twenty R would not have an unreasonable impact on the surrounding community based on the residential setting as well as the surrounding uses. Therefore, it is recommended that rezoning request be approved. This case was heard March seventh by the Harnett County Planning Board, who voted unanimously to also recommend approval based on the compatibility to the land use plan, future residential use being compatible with its surroundings. No one spoke in opposition. And as I explained in the beginning, I know Commissioner Nickel has spoke with the applicant, we spoke with the applicant tonight, and we believe that it's, it's in the best interest of the applicant that they have some issues with the restricted covenants. And there's some questions on whether or not it, how the property can be used. And so we think it may be in the best interest of the applicant to table this request to our next meeting to give them an opportunity to, to research, as well as Commissioner Nickel, I think, wanted to look into it as well. Give them the opportunity to look into those issues that they, they are dealing with, with that. Understanding that restricted covenants has nothing to do with rezoning requests. It's not really something that we would look into as a staff. I'm available for any other questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Locklear? Well, I think we'll go ahead with the public hearing.
Exactly.
Tonight, so at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning change, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. And do I hear a motion concerning this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, we table this application. So we can have a little bit of time to do some research. From what I'm hearing is that the landowner actually does not want to, did not really want to sell or to change this from commercial to residential. It was basically conducive on them trying to sell that and being forced into this situation at the moment. I just want to go ahead and make sure that everything that they've been told and that they're tracking, you know, is, is good and they're making the right decision here.
All right, we have a motion to table this, this vote until, when do you wanna, when do you think you'll be prepared?
You go for the next meeting.
April fourth. April fourth.
You go April fourth, ma'am?
Okay.
I amend my motion to include, we'll table this until April fourth.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, just a quick question. So I understand that the landowners are in favor of this.
Correct, the landowners are right here now, and I spoke with them prior to this. And what they had said to me was that they had tried to sell the property in the past. It was listed as commercial and they ran into some hiccups because of restricted covenants on the property, being that it was included in the Carolina Hill subdivision. However, if you can see on the adjacent properties, it's, it's commercial. And that would be adding to residential coming down that line up to it. And I just don't think, based off of them wanting to sell it, that would be very, the best decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the surrounding land on a commercial or residential? That's what I'm confused about.
On the backside of the property is a, is Carolina Hill subdivision.
Okay.
And, but if you see the road frontage here on Buffalo Lake Road and on Cook's Lane where the driveway is, those are commercial properties. And then across the street, I mean, you have, right next to it is a mechanic shop, tire, Harrell's Auto Parts, as you can see right there. And then directly across the street is the fire department and Amarillo Lane with several retail and commercial.
And this is a little weird piece of land because it has double frontage. It's frontage inside a residential neighborhood and it's frontage out on Buffalo Lake Road as well as the lane that's going down the side. So it could be utilized honestly both ways.
That's the understanding I was getting. That's really, that's the question.
And it's got some resident, it's got some residential beside it and it's got some commercial that's by it. So it's literally a little bit quirky in that, in that fashion.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I will enter, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling this to April fourth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hear it unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Board. All right, we'll move to item seven, the 2022 reappraisal summary. Mr. Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board for allowing us to come yet again before you to make one more presentation about the 2022 reappraisal. This, if you've been to any of our public meetings, if you've been to some of the presentations, you will see some things you may have seen before. However, there are some summer results in here that are very important for everyone to see. And I believe that as we go through this presentation, and I've asked Ryan Vincent of Vincent Valuations to, to present this for us, I think you'll see what has happened. I think you'll, I think you'll find that we have met our statutory requirement about assessing the property here in the county for 2022. And with your, with your permission, we'll ask Ryan Vincent to come up and do that.
Good to see you again, Ryan.
Good to see you. I appreciate you guys letting us present like Mr. Tyson said, again. Seems like we've been up here a lot. So my name is Ryan Vincent with Vincent Valuations. We were hired about three years ago to conduct the 2022 reappraisal. So tonight, we're gonna go through a little bit about the reappraisal, why we did it, how we did it, and some of the results of what we're seeing, and also the process in which property owners can go through to appeal their value if they see fit. So reappraisal is the process in which we go through and we revalue all properties in the county to their current market value as of a particular day. This day in Harnett County is January first, 2022. And real property includes the land and any buildings that are permanently affixed to it. So state law tells us that we have to do a reappraisal at least once every eight years. North Carolina Department of Revenue has recommended that counties go to a four-year cycle. And currently, our last reappraisal in Harnett County was in 2017. So we touched a minute ago on market value. So market value is the most probable price that a willing buyer and willing seller would pay in an open and competitive market for a piece of property. And it's important to remember that the tax office does not set market value. We are simply taking a snapshot of market value as of a particular day. We're looking at the actions of buyers and sellers and trying to mimic those within our valuations. So again, the reappraisal will take effect January first, 2022. The new market values on the new tax bills will go out this summer, and we plan to mail notices this week. So a few basic steps to the reappraisal. First thing we did was we started by visiting every piece of property in the county. So we went to everyone's home and business. If anyone was there, we knocked on the door. We asked them a few questions about the property. And then from there proceeded to do what we call a full measure and list, where we measure every single structure that's on the property to ensure our data is listed accurately. We also took photos of every property when we were out there. From there, that information gets brought into the office, entered into the computer system. And then we start analyzing sales. So we're looking at, what are people paying for certain pieces of property? By location, by age, by condition, by quality, everything that a buyer and seller would look at in the market. We analyze those sales and we break them down into valuation models. And that's what we call our schedule of values, which is what we brought before you. This time, it's probably been about six months ago for approval. So some things that are a little difficult for us, if we go to a house and it's a two-story house, we might not know if there is cathedral ceilings in there. So there might only be a one-story section in the center of the house. Or if you have a finished or unfinished basement, we might not know the interior finish. Same for a finished attic. We might not know if somebody had finished the attic or if the attic is unfinished. So those are the, some of the challenges that we face through this process when we're in the field. So we do it this way because we're responsible for appraising. Right now, it's about 70,000 pieces of property in the county, again, as of one particular day. Most major taxing jurisdictions across the state and across the country do things this way. And one way that we're a little bit different than a fee appraiser, say, somebody who comes to your house for a mortgage refinance or purchase, is we do not keep three or five specific comparables on file. It's just not our process. So if we're questioned about that, our answer is we simply don't have those. We analyze all of the sales in a neighborhood or a market area and build valuations to mimic these sales. So some of the things we look at to test our valuation methods, first one is called the sales ratio. That's simply taking the assessed value and dividing it by the sale price. State law tells us that we have to value as close to 100% as possible, meaning if a house sells for $100,000, we have to value it as close to 100,000 as possible using our models and keeping consistency with the other properties in mind. So if, for example, a house sells for 100 and we assess it for 90,000, we're at a 90% ratio or we're 10% below the sale price. Excuse me. The other test we look at is called the coefficient of dispersion, or COD. And this simply tells us how spread out our ratios are amongst the whole strata of data or the whole area of sale prices. So a little disclaimer here, up until basically today, we're still working on the valuations. All these valuations are subject to appeal through the appeal process, and any more information we might get in through the appeal process. So at the onset of the project, we set some goals. Our goal, one, was to have our sales ratio between 90 and 110%, as close to 100 as possible. We were shooting for a COD between 10 and 15 while also keeping equity amongst the properties. And these goals were reflective of our professional organization, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers, and also the North Carolina Department of Revenue's recommendations. So our final statistics, based on 4,754 valid sales in the year 2021, so that's January first of 21 to December, the end of December of 2021, our median sales ratio or our middle point was 98.36. Our mean or our average sales ratio was 98.85, and our COD was 11.07. So this means that our appraisal methods accurately mimicked the market or our valuation models were generating numbers and appraisal values that were right in line with what the actions of buyers and sellers were doing. So another way to look at it, our overall countywide increase in property value is estimated to be somewhere between 39 and 43%. And again, you're seeing some ranges here because these are subject to appeals and when this presentation was created a few weeks ago, subject to further review prior to us mailing the notices. Eighty-seven percent of the properties will have a higher value than in 2017. Thirteen percent will have a lower value, and 12% of the properties in the county changed by plus or minus less than 15%. So some jurisdictional changes. Again, countywide, we're looking at about 39 to 43% increase. Town of Andrew, we're looking at 52 to 56. Town of Coates, 43 to 47. City of Dunn, 27 to 31% increase. Town of Irwin, 33 to 37% increase, and the town of Lillington, 41 to 45% increase. So the next, I think we have about 15 or 20 of these slides. The next few slides are gonna show us what's going on in the market. We're gonna show some actual sales of properties that have occurred in the county. What you're gonna see is you're gonna see a location, you're gonna see a 2017 assessed value, and you're going to see a sale price and a sale date and a percentage of increase or decrease from that particular transaction. So the first one was in Lillington. This one sold for 145,000, or was assessed, excuse me, for 145,000 in 2017. It sold in September of 21 for 235, and that's an increase of 61%. Next one in Lillington was assessed for 176, sold in November for 285. That's an increase of 61%. Next one in Lillington was assessed for 183, sold in September of 21 for 289. That's an increase of 57%. Next one in Lillington, this one was assessed for 103,000. It sold in November for 199, and that's an increase of 92%. Now, one thing I want to point out on this slide is, one of the trends we've seen is the more affordable houses have increased a little bit more than the more expensive houses. So as you can see in the previous slides, they were priced a little bit higher. This one originally was assessed for 103, sold for right almost 200,000, and it went up substantially higher than the other houses did. This one in Lillington was assessed for 93, sold for 178, and that's an increase of 89%. Then we move to Northwest Harnett. This one is actually a double sale, so this one sold twice within the last two years. It was assessed originally in '17 for 273. It sold first in May of 2020 for 305. Then it sold again, a little over a year later, in September of '21, for 425,000. So you can see, just in that one year, a little more than one year time span, this property went up about $120,000 from one sale to another sale. This one also in Northwest Harnett was assessed for 242, sold for 370. That's an increase of 53%. This one in Northwest Harnett was assessed for 244, sold in November for 390. That's an increase of 60%. This one in Northwest Harnett was assessed for 201, sold in November for 420. That's an increase of 208%. Then we move to Andrew. This one was assessed for 174, sold in March for 270. That's an increase of 55%. Also in Andrew, this one was assessed for 148, sold for 194. That's an increase of 31%. This one in Andrew was assessed for 167, sold in June for 270. That's an increase of 61%. In Dunn, this one was assessed for 388, sold in November for 475. That's an increase of 22%. Also in Dunn, this one was assessed for 146, sold in October for 225. That's an increase of 53%. Last one we have in Dunn was assessed for 177, sold in July for 289. That's an increase of 63%. Moving over to Barbecue Township, this one was assessed for 123, sold in June for 190. That's an increase of 53%. This one was assessed for 185, sold for 267. That's an increase of 44%. This one was assessed for 312, sold in October for 402. That's an increase of 29%. Then we move to Cameron, and these are all within Harnett County. This one was assessed, excuse me, for 114, sold for 178. That's an increase of 56%. Next one was assessed for 281, sold right almost on our reappraisal date, December 30th, for 384. That's an increase of 37%. In Anderson Creek, this one was assessed for 124, sold for 175. That's an increase of 40%. Also in Anderson Creek, this one was assessed for 252, sold for 325. That's an increase of 28%. Then we move to Irwin. This one was assessed for 127, sold for 205. That's an increase of 61%. And in Irwin, again, this one was assessed for 155, sold December 7th for 255. That's an increase of 63%. In Coates, this one was assessed for 127, sold in July for 220. That's an increase of 72%. In Bun Level, this one was assessed for 177, sold for 237. That's an increase of 34%. And the last slide we have here is in Broadway. This one was assessed for 160, sold in June for 214, and that's an increase of 33%. So next, we want to touch on the difference between appraised values and tax rates. So your tax bill is made up of two things. It's made up of your appraised value or your assessed value, and it's made up of your tax rate. So at the tax office, we are responsible for one half of that, and that is the appraised value. The elected officials, this board, and the town boards are responsible for the tax rates. Now, one question we commonly get when folks call up after they get their notice is, what is my tax bill going to be? The answer to that at this point is, we don't know. The tax rates are part of the budgeting process for local government, and that process has not occurred yet. So we will not be able to answer the question of how will this affect my tax bill. We can't answer that at this time. So you get your notice in the mail. You should receive those either this weekend or early next week by the time they get into your mailbox, and you look at your notice and you say, well, that seems like a reasonable number for what I could sell my house for January 1st, 2022. There's nothing you need to do. There's no action required on your part. If you have questions, we ask you to follow a three-step process. The first step is go online and review your information, and if you can't get online, you can call us. We can review it with you over the phone. So we ask you to check your bedrooms, your bathrooms, your square footage, and make sure all the information that we have on file for your house is accurate. If it's incorrect, we're going to ask you to file an appeal, and we can address those issues fairly quickly. The second step is to compare. So we worked closely with the GIS department. They've been really great to work with, and they've created a website for us and put all of the sales on a map. So you can search your property, and you can see what your neighbors are paying for their property. You can also filter it down by age, square footage, bedrooms, bathrooms, acreage, things like that, to try to help get you to comparable properties for your particular piece of property. So if you've reviewed your property and your information's correct, you've compared it to other properties, and you still feel your value is out of line for what the market is doing, we'd ask you to go ahead and file an appeal. Appeals can be filed first and foremost online, which is what we prefer, but they can also be filed by paper, or if, we can email you a paper form, or if somebody wants to come in, we can give them a form, and we can help them fill that form out if they have questions. So a couple of questions we ask if you decide to file an appeal is, is the appeal really about value? And there's a few reasons we commonly get as to reasons we do not consider are valid for tax appeal reasons. The first one is the percentage of change from the last reappraisal. That's a very common reason people appeal, but it's not necessarily a valid reason to file an appeal. We saw in the previous slides that some properties changed 10 and 20%, and some properties changed over 200%. So just because your property went up or down in value doesn't mean that's a reason to file an appeal.
When did property taxes ever gone down? Don't stand there lying. What a piece of crap.
Mr. Reavis, this is not a time for...
I don't care. That's a...
This is not a time for open discussion. Please refrain.
Well, my God, I want to say what's on my mind, and that son of a bitch is lying. Property taxes go down.
Mr. Reavis.
What a crock of crap.
Mr. Reavis, if you're going to continue to interrupt this meeting, there's the door.
What, you're going to trespass me from public property?
No, I'm not trespassing. I'm asking you to leave.
No, I won't.
Well, then shut your mouth.
Come make me. Try and make me.
All right, so another reason to, not necessarily a valid reason to file an appeal, is the affordability of the expected taxes. So we know that this is a issue, but there is programs that are administered through our office that are dictated to us through the state. These are the elderly and disabled program, the veterans exemption, and also the farm use program. So these programs have income limitations, disability limitations, and acreage limitations based on the program. And again, those are dictated to us through the state. We have no control over those limits, and they are administered through our office. And the last reason to not file an appeal is the level of services provided by your local community. So if you do choose to file an appeal, here's a couple of things that we'd be looking for. First and foremost, if you have any comparable sales, so again, this is based on market value. It's based on what people are paying for properties in your area for like properties. So if you feel your value is something different, we would ask that you submit some comparable sales of similar properties. Those sales could come from our website, the county website. They could come from a real estate professional or maybe an appraiser. If you have any issues with your property, let's say you have a leaky roof or you have foundation problems, we would ask that you submit any photos of that or any estimates from contractors that you might have. And lastly, with the low interest rates and a lot of transactions going on, there's a lot of fee appraisals floating around. So if you do choose to file an appeal and you have a recent fee appraisal that shows a substantially different value, we would ask that you submit that as evidence with your appeal process. So again, to recap, if you have any data errors on your property, those can be handled fairly quickly, but we would ask that you go ahead and file an appeal. If you know somebody who might qualify from one of the property tax relief programs, please have them contact our office, and we'd be happy to walk them through the qualifications and see if they qualify. Appeals should be based on value and not the change in value from the previous reappraisal or what the expected tax bill might be, because again, we don't know what the expected tax bill is going to be. And last and most important on this slide is the deadline to file appeals is April 28th at 3:00 p.m. Anything that comes in after that will be considered untimely, and will have to go forth to the next year. So the effective date of the reappraisal is January 1st, 2022. We plan to mail notices right here at the end of this week. Our initial Board of Equalization appeal hearings will begin on April 7th. The deadline to submit property tax appeals is April 28th at 3:00 p.m., and the first tax bills that will go out that will be impacted by these new values will go out in the summer of 2022. So again, all appeals must be in by April 28th at 3:00 p.m. And that's all we got. We'll take any questions.
Anyone have any, any of the commissioners have questions for, about this presentation? Well, thank you, sir.
All right, well, appreciate it.
This was information only. There's no vote to be taken. Thank you for that. All right, we'll move to item eight on the agenda. This is having to do with ARPA funding, and we are having a public input session. Mr. Haney, could you go over what these funds can be used for? We won't go through the whole thing here. If you'll just go over what the funds can and cannot be used for, and then we'll go to the public input session.
Okay, absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. Just to recap, Harnett County is receiving $26.4 million from the American Rescue Plan Act. That funding is dictated, the use of that funding is dictated by the U.S. Treasury as well as by North Carolina law. Eligible uses of American Rescue Plan Act funding are to support the public health response to COVID-19. That could include expenses for vaccination programs and sites, including staff, costs of providing COVID-19 testing, monitoring, contact tracing, communication efforts, acquisition and distribution of PPE, expenses of providing paid sick and paid family, and medical leave to public employees, expenses for the improvement of ventilation systems and public facilities, capital investments or adaptations to public facilities like hospitals or health clinics, and the mental health treatment or substance misuse treatment and other behavioral health services. Next is addressing negative economic impacts related to COVID-19. That could be assistance to households or populations, preferably those most disproportionately impacted by the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, small business and nonprofit support, aid to impacted industries, rehiring state and local government staff to pre-pandemic levels, and assistance to unemployed workers. One issue to note in this category is that in addition to U.S. Treasury compliance, it must also be compliant with state law, which makes, you cannot give grant funds to private entities. It must be for a public purpose, and then whatever programs may be enacted, there are issues in terms of staff capacity to implement and manage such programs. So that would be something that we would want to consider. Next are providing premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work, replacing lost public sector revenue, which I'll touch on just briefly after this, and then investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. As I mentioned, one of the categories is replacing public sector revenue loss. There is a standard allowance from the U.S. Treasury's final rule of $10 million, which can be used for this purpose. So the plan that was provided last week would be to supplant $10 million by using that for public, or, excuse me, general government payroll and salaries, and then that funding would be more flexible for you to use for whatever general government purpose the board deems appropriate. Are there any other questions for me?
Anyone have questions about what the funds can and cannot be used for? I think it was pretty, pretty clear. You might want to stand by in case we have some questions or something.
I can do that.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'll open up the public input period. Each person will have three minutes. When you come forward, please state your name and your address, and tell us how you think these ARPA funds should be spent.
Is this only concerning these funds?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Haney. And by the way, congratulations. I understand you'll be leaving the county. I hope you do well and come. I'm John Frank Smith, Sr. I live at 1503 Lake Shore Drive down in North Carolina, 28334. I'm also president of the Shawtown High School Alumni Association. I'm not here to take three minutes. I'm only here to ask for certain things to be included in this plan. I noticed that on page 59, there's information concerning potential projects and so forth in the future. I'm asking you to please consider including in the plan a water and sewer line to the properties owned by the Shawtown High School Alumni Association in the Shawtown area, a property and sewer lines. I'm also asking you to consider including in the plan, if at all possible, based on what I heard Brian say a few minutes ago, a paved driveway to the property along with a paved parking lot in order to meet the correct things in our site plan as indicated by the fire department. And I'm also asking that since Shawtown has been an area without a multipurpose athletic complex all of my life and the life of even my parents, please consider putting money in this plan to include a multipurpose athletic complex for the Shawtown community on property that is available there. It would certainly be appreciated if you would give and include all of these suggestions in the plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ronnie Kemp. My address is 244 Chesley Lane in Lillington. I've brought in some visual aids that Melissa's going to be so kind to share tonight during this presentation. My understanding is that the ARPA funds have been specifically designated to address impacts spurred or exacerbated by the pandemic and to help communities plan and prepare for future disruptive events. I'm speaking tonight to explain how the pandemic has created increased demand on our animal shelter and to ask that funds be intentionally set aside to replace that facility in the near future. A recent ASPCA study found that adoptions from shelters and rescues were significantly down during COVID due to restriction and protocols resulting in reduced intakes, fewer out-of-state rescue transports, and the fact that many animals were temporarily rehomed to friends, neighbors, or family members. Unfortunately, many of those animals are now ending up in our shelter system. The pandemic has caused insurmountable challenges for many pet owners, including a lack of available and affordable vet care, difficulty securing pet food and supplies, limited access to resources to help with behavioral concerns. As a result, an alarming 12% of pet owners rehomed an animal during the pandemic, and 8% of dog and cat owners are currently considering relinquishing their pets within the next three months. The reasons reported to shelter staff on a daily basis... three months. The reasons reported to shelter staff on a daily basis as to why pets are being surrendered include job losses, people not being able to stay in their homes, cost of vet care, and having less time to spend or care for their pets. The truth is, the pandemic has many pet families in our area facing financial and housing insecurities. Problematic rental restrictions continue to limit the size, breed, and number of pets, making finding pet-friendly, affordable housing nearly impossible. Even before the pandemic, this was the leading cause of animal surrenders to our shelter. Now, let's talk about the shelter itself. A converted office space more than 25 years old, it was never intended to serve the purpose it does today. The space is inadequate not only for cats and dogs, but for livestock, which are housed more frequently than most people realize. The lack of space is a critical factor affecting the officer's ability to bring in animals, and it has a direct impact on the shelter's published euthanasia rate. Not to mention there are few opportunities for enrichment or proper physical and emotional care for the animals. The building's basic systems, for example, the drainage system or the heating and cooling systems, are continually failing and needing repairs. Like I've said before, the building is crumbling. The shelter is located between the prison and the water treatment plant. It's quite frankly, the opposite of welcoming, and it does not encourage volunteerism or a steady flow of public adopters, and both of those are much needed. Our dilapidated shelter only goes to support the existing poor public image of our Animal Services Department. The county has overlooked and kicked this project down the road, and that attitude is reflected in the depressing condition of the facility. This is a rare chance for you to initiate a real shift in the county's perception and approach to animal welfare. Replacing our shelter is exactly the type of project ARPA funds are designed to support. The shelter is continuing to be burdened by an exponential rise in owner surrendered and abandoned animals brought on by the pandemic. All it will take is one hurricane or another economic depression, and we will find ourselves completely unable to meet the needs of this community. We'll be awash in homeless pets. ARPA funds can help us not only replace the current building, but doing so will prepare Harnett County Animal Services to better serve the residents of this county in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Margaret Morton. I live at 86 Gwendolin Way. May I ask a question? Is it okay before I make my statement? Commissioner Matthews?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you guys receive, the school system receive funds for improving ventilation systems in the school?
We received funding called ESER funding, which is pretty much similar to this ARPA funding, and some of that money was used for what's known as a Remy Halo system to purify the air.
Was it enough?
Yes, we have, well, we're about 94% complete, but we have all of our inventory. We've just got some because of the way the ceilings are arranged that have to be done when students are out the building, so they'll be completed this summer.
All right. So did that include the huts as well?
Yes, the whole outfit.
I'm happy to hear that. So I was going to say, one thing that I noticed from the list of allocations, I saw nothing for the schools. And I understand that projects need to be completed by 2026, but I think we need to, we would be a mess if we did not dedicate some of those funds for the schools. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to raise this up a little bit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Bill Morris. I live at 129 Bumpus Creek Access in Dunn. I'd like to just take a couple of minutes and talk to you about staff retention. Some of you may know that I was an employee with the county for 20 years, and during that time, we were a training ground for all our surrounding counties. We just couldn't compete with their pay, with their benefits package. And I hope that as some of this money is supplanted out of your regular budget, that you can see fit to find some way to aid our employees a little more. We all appreciate what you do. You've got a terrible and awesome responsibility with the budget and everything you have to do, 1,000 employees. But if you would, please keep that in mind during the budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Richard Chapman, 5220, Kristen Light Road. I apologize, I'm a little bit behind the curve on all of this. For a long time now, I've understood that this $26 million windfall is headed our way, and that primarily was going to go to internet and broadband. And I've shared that with the community, and I've never met anybody who wasn't excited by the prospect. I read Mr. Haney's memo several times, and if he understands it, Mr. Trout understands it, and the five of you understand it, then there are only seven people in the county who do understand it, because it leaves me completely baffled. I only see $2.75 million going to broadband in the form of matching funds. I see $10 million going to public safety salaries and benefits, which I guess that means Wayne Coats gets $10 million. For what? I don't know. Has he been firing deputies due to the pandemic over all this time, and he's going to rehire them? Or is they gonna, where's the $10 million going to go? This is the, this is an important document, and $26 million is a lot of money and a big commitment. And it seems to me that we need more of a public briefing than we do just a public hearing and an input session. If the people who conducted the tax reappraisal were in charge of informing the public about the $26 million, I think there'd be a whole lot of better informed people out there, including myself. I don't know that there's anything wrong with this. I don't know that it's flawed at all. I just don't understand a whole lot of the details, and I think the public's entitled to that. So I really don't have a recommendation other than that we spend a little bit more time in explaining more of the strategy behind it, the details, the reasons for some of the things that Mr. Haney has done a very good job in summarizing, and communicate that to the public as best we can. I don't think we've done that quite yet. So I would ask that we take a little bit more time. We've got till 2026 in order to spend all the money. I know we have to make decisions and get things going pretty quickly, but you know, I think spending a little bit more time and transparency would be wise. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
My name is Jerry Rivas, 364 Twin Ponds Road. This $26 million, so $10 million of this is going to Wayne Coats. You know, in, in the Harnett Dunn Daily Record, two different articles, Mr. Coats blames this Board of Commissioners for some of the contentious stuff that's going on concerning body cameras. He said he will not run his sheriff's department by committee. He was elected by the people, and he answers to the people. Well, it seems to me that the five of y'all are the people's representatives, and that if the five of you want body cameras, you're speaking for the will of the people. So what's, what's the problem? I wonder, with his $10 million, is he going to buy some body cameras? You know, he said he doesn't like them because they get too shaky. But I want to see what led up to the shaking of the camera, be it one minute, three minutes, five minutes. You got a deputy standing back here. Sheriff Coats said his number one priority, he told me this face to face about five years ago, was that his deputies get home safe every night. Doesn't he care enough about their safety to provide them with the safety that a body camera would provide? It's another eyewitness that can testify in court. If Deputy Nick Cahagis would have been wearing a body camera, would it maybe have shown that, I don't know, was John Livingston the aggressor? Or Sheriff Coats against body cameras? Because it would have shown Deputy Cahagis was an abusive jerk. Listen, it's a knife that cuts both ways, okay? But it would offer irrefutable evidence in the event of wrongdoing of a perpetrator. It would protect more deputies than it would hurt. And if he has to weed out a few bad ones, so be it. He also said this stuff was brought on by frivolous lawsuits against the county and his department. Was John Livingston's life frivolous? Tom Cardwell, a 66-year-old Vietnam veteran, body slammed so hard that it broke his hip. Was his service in Vietnam frivolous? Was his broken thigh frivolous? I'm sure if we asked him, he was having fun. Frivolity all around. But, and, and, and I don't know where this little redheaded liar went off to, but I would like this man to show me, show me one time in the last 50 years.
Mr. Rivas, that's not what we're here to discuss.
That anybody's property taxes have gone down.
Mr. Rivas, this is not about property taxes.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm out of order, let me know.
Okay.
On the broadband, and the fund is in this $26.4 million, that is additional money for the broadband. Brian, would you please explain to them the huge cost that it's going to cost this county to get broadband? This is something I've been involved in and working on for seven years now. I want to see broadband across this county in underserved areas. If anything, if there's been anything to show us how badly it's needed, it's this virus because of the children in our education system and the children in our schools. So all of this money that's in this plan here is not enough money to put broadband across this county. Am I not wrong?
You are correct, and I'd like to clarify a couple of points that have come up just to make sure it's clear for the discussion. So as I mentioned, one of the pots or the allowable uses for ARPA funding is revenue replacement. That is the $10 million standard allowance that was authorized by the U.S. Treasury's final rule that was released, I believe, January 6th. So that is what the $10 million, the $10 million is the standard allowance for that. That is what that $10 million for salary and benefits is. It's not that that's what the ARPA money is being used to do that wasn't already being done. It is a vehicle to supplant the funding to provide the board and the county with $10 million that can go towards projects without being as tied to the ARPA eligible requirements. It frees up money for projects, some of them that were mentioned tonight, which otherwise could not be funded with ARPA funds. So that $10 million comes off the top of the $26.4, leaving $16.4 million, which the county is required to use this funding and may only use this funding for ARPA eligible projects. That other $10 million is funding that we've identified to be able to supplant, to allow for other needs to be addressed that may not otherwise qualify. Beyond, so it is not going specifically to those departments, and it's actually general, there is a misprint. It's not public safety, it is general government expenditure. So it's going to employees generally to allow that money that would have otherwise been spent for that purpose to be freed up. On the broadband point, there is $2.75 million in ARPA eligible expenditures that is in the plan to go towards grant matches. The state through the American Rescue Plan has two programs. One is the Great Grant Program for which counties are eligible for up to $8 million in grant funding that can be used for broadband. The required match, the state, the legislature has pretty much incentivizing county governments to put ARPA funding towards that project, to the point where you get extra points in your application if you do so. That is what that $750,000 is going to as part of that $2.75 million. That is the maximum required match Harnett County would need to put forward in the event we were awarded an $8 million grant. The other $2 million is a match for a CAB grant, which is connecting areas to broadband. That's another state grant program that we'll be rolling out after the Great Grant. So the purpose of the ARPA funding from our perspective was to leverage county funds so that we're pulling in funds and going after state and federal grants so that the county will not be on the hook for that entire amount of money. The county's taxpayers will not be on the hook to run broadband, because as you mentioned, Commissioner McCoy, it is a substantial cost. Another issue related to state law that inhibits us a little bit is that you can only use county funds. We're not allowed to run broadband infrastructure or support broadband in any other way except for partnering with internet service providers through the provision of grants. So to do that, we've had to enter into an RFP process where we did select a provider. However, you are allowed to partner with others through this Great Grant process, but state statutes will only allow the county to contribute funds unrestricted general fund revenue, which outside of ARPA is just pretty much sales tax revenue. You cannot use property tax for broadband. So we have had to work through those lines, and you're only allowed to use it for unserved areas as defined by the FCC. And it's defined by census block, and if any portion of a census block is considered served, then the entire census block is considered served. So we are very limited due to statutory limitations on what we can do with this fund, funding for broadband. Beyond that, the commissioners, you've already approved $2 million from the county's Displaced Cares Act funding. That is going towards a project that is currently underway to provide a fixed wireless broadband solution north of the Cape Fear River. The other half of that project, the southern portion, is funded or funding is included in this plan out of the displaced ARPA funding that would help us move forward with the other portion of that project. So there is movement on broadband. However, there are restrictions in place that limit what we can do. Are there any other questions about that that I've not covered?
You did a good job of kind of explaining the method behind the madness there.
It is very complicated, and county staff and counties all across the state have been trying to put plans together for, for over a year now with, with ARPA. So I understand it is complex, and we're happy to explain it to any citizen who wishes to, to reach out to us. We'll happily sit down.
But the bottom line is, we are limited by state statute.
That's right.
And we can't take this money and put it directly to broadband.
That's right.
That is correct.
Yeah, we, state statute says we cannot do any infrastructure. Wilson County did that, and they are one of two exceptions in the state. They got grandfathered, but it's, it's not as easy as it seems.
Unfortunately, not.
I thank you for explaining that, and the reason I wanted him to explain it is because the average citizen don't understand it.
That's right.
They, they think that we're just taking this, this money here and putting it down towards broadband when we are restricted as to what we do with our own funds here in this county. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The, the final U.S. Treasury guidance is over 400 pages, so it, it's, it's been a challenge.
And I was trying to find out also, you know, where that $10 million for the sheriff's department was at. I hadn't seen it in here. So, I mean, public safety is, that's first responders, help me out here, fire marshal.
Well, and the sheriff's office would be included under public safety salaries, but it is solely a vehicle to supplant funding to free up that $10 million for other priorities.
And, and we do have about, right at, right at 4.5 million, about 4.5 million to help the sheriff's department, fire and rescue EMS with the Viper system, which we, you know, we've got to, we've got to upgrade that so that these agencies can talk to each other. You don't want to be out on an island, and that's what we're trying to, to avoid. So some funding's going to go to first responders, which includes law enforcement. Yes, sir.
Yes, the only actual item you see listed in all the funding that we have is $188,000 for the sheriff's department. That's the only funding that we are recommending be considered. And actually, the sheriff is applying for a grant, which would get $85,000 of that $188,000 if he's successful. So it would actually only be $103,000. That's specifically dedicated to the sheriff's department, other than the radios that would be changed out. other than the radios that would be changed out.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brian, that did help. Rebecca Brock, 5220, Christian Light Road. And I just want to say that I think had the ARP money been given the same treatment as the tax valuations that we've had go on here, geez, for the last 60 days, where they had talks throughout the county about your taxes and how it was going to happen, it would have, the, the community would have been far better educated. And guess what? You guys have a phenomenal IT department here. You could have Mr. Haney, I know you're going to kill me, Brian, but he could do a video, and you could post it on your YouTube site to just talk about some of this information that's detailed. And if someone, the public, could get notified of that in your weekly email blast that goes out to interested parties. Because I do think you've put a lot of time into this. I think there's things that, that $10 million that now I kind of call it the slush fund that you have that you can now put to other things like the Board of Elections building, the animal shelter, other things that people need. Because if you take that $2.6 million, $2.64 million divided by that 70,000 households, that's $377 per household. They'd love to have that spread out. But you know, the deal is, they just want to be educated and informed. And I know your time is limited, and the current technology could allow for education of our constituents here in Harnett County. For future thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Good suggestion, and I'm going to ask our county manager, Assistant County Manager Haney, and our Public Information Officer Ashley, if y'all will put your heads together, maybe you can do something and get it out quickly.
Did we have the cameras running last week at the work sessions when we went over all this?
Yeah, they could go back and refer to that to start with, and then we'll pull together.
That's a good point. If you, you can go back to where we had our work session last week and hear a very detailed explanation.
I was at the workshop session, and it was very, it was very good. But I, people don't want to listen when they're looking at you guys. They want to be talked to. So Mr. Haney could basically say, hey, he's the, here's what's going on. Here's the parameters. It gives them some education. That's, maybe they install a camera look in this way for a change.
Okay.
We'll check your.
Anyone else? Well.
Ellis West Cruda, 234 Hamilton Road. Just to second what Ms. Brock says, if you could, if they could break it down, because what he said was very critical and very crucial. And these are questions that will be asked once Mr. Haney is no longer available. We need to just get it broken down to where we all could properly consume, because you know, all we're hearing is $10 million in Sheriff's Department. But when you hear the breakdown of it, it's something else. So if they could just take the time and just break it down, have it where we can visit and revisit it, and it's explained, and not in the way it was presented, but in an explanation instead of a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward or move to come forward, I'm going to close this public input session. And we will be discussing this in upcoming work sessions. At this time, we will go to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing additional other than that there are a number of reports in, in your packets, primarily our, our budget amendments, and then our monthly financial report. Continue to do well on our financials, so look, look through that. Otherwise, no other comments.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Trout? Okay, thanks, sir. Is there any new business to come before the board? I don't know of anything tonight. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn.
Have a motion. Did I hear a second? Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank y'all for coming tonight.